Good afternoon and welcome to the Town of Redding to Shore's Board of Commissioners Special Meeting. Today is Friday, July 23rd, 2021. It is now 2:02 PM. Please rise to question.
With allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Mary, please call.
Commissioner Blackburn?
Here.
Commissioner Kraut?
Here.
Vice Mayor Robinson?
Here.
Mayor Henderson?
Here.
All right, we have one item on our agenda, and that is hiring a public works position.
So do I start with the motion and then second and open it for discussion, or how does this go?
You can talk about it if you'd like to.
No, do we make a motion first and then we have a second and then we discuss it? Is it like?
You could do it either way.
We can do it either way.
Okay. So you guys interviewed, would you like to talk first?
No, not necessarily.
Um, I mean, if I had to make a motion, I would make a motion that we, uh...
Is this a motion, or do you want?
Let me finish my sentence and then we'll see. Um, I am leaning towards Mario. That's who I would recommend. And if I had to make a motion, that's who it would be for. And, um, and, and my reasons are, you know, I know Mike and Cindy have experience with hiring and firing personnel, you know, for their, for Marriott and for the state. And, um, what you guys might not know is that before real estate, I have almost 20 years of experience in uh, employment and personnel staffing. I've done, um, medical, industrial, and technical staffing. So I've done more than my fair share of screening, assessing, interviewing, and hiring employees. So, and in that business, if you get it wrong, it's not just, oh, well, you gotta start over. It, if you get it wrong, you're not just fired. Uh, it's your company and all its employees are fired because you get fired by the client. So you learn very quick. And, uh, you learn from your mistakes. I've had a lot of opportunities to make mistakes and to have successes as well, to learn what works and what doesn't, and what type of things to look for beyond just education and do they have experience doing a particular job. So, uh, what I learned to do was to screen for, um, the behavior and values. And one of the most important values, um, and it's hard to screen for values. One of the most important though is work ethic. Um, I don't, Marriott probably used the DISC system. You familiar with that with drive, influence, steadiness? No, never did that?
No.
Like a profile. So, um, a lot of companies use the DISC system and that measures behavior, but it also has a component that a lot of companies don't use, which is the component for values. So for instance, it's a bad idea to have someone, hire someone that has high drive, low compliance, and also a very low regulatory drive. Regulatory drive is, uh, they look for a higher regulatory drive in law enforcement people. It's doing the right thing even when nobody's watching. So, uh, in looking for values, I have to say that Mike Pafumi, who works in public works now, he is a rare find for an employee because he has a great work ethic, uh, he has a great attitude, he's super resourceful. Anything he doesn't know, um, he's tech savvy. He takes out that phone, he opens it up and looks at a YouTube video. So the sprinklers we were having a problem with, he looked at a couple of YouTube videos, figured it out, and fixed it. Um, the sewer readings too. He got a little bit of training with that, but he really figured it out himself. The other thing is that the former guys used to go and take the readings, then go back to the shop and get the calculator, and then go back out and adjust the controls if needed. So they would do the calculations. It was like three or four steps that could have been done in one. So Mike just takes the, takes his phone out, there's a calculator on it, he figures it out, he makes the adjustment right then and there. So a guy like Mike doesn't leave for a dollar more. He leaves because he's frustrated with seeing laziness, frustrated with seeing waste, um, inefficiency, um, or things that are unfair that are not getting addressed by management. So all three of these guys are nice guys. Brian and Tom, very, very likable. Um, maybe Brian's more of a conversationalist than Mario. It was hard not to like, uh, Brian in the interview. Um, so it's tempting to pick him for that, and it's hard not to be influenced because you like or relate more to one candidate than another. And, uh, Brian is likable and he has a lot of certificates, which might solve part of a problem in the short term. He doesn't have every certificate that we're looking for. He has a couple that might make it easier in the very short term. But frankly, in, in looking at his, uh, work history, his decisions are, are very self-serving. Changing jobs for a shorter commute makes sense, but, uh, or as my husband says, it makes sense when you say it real fast. But there's a pattern of going from Pinellas to Manatee to Hillsborough and back to Pinellas again as a red flag. The behavior tells me that I'll leave if it's better for me. So how long until he decides that the beach is too far to drive, uh, or someone pays a dollar more? Which, you know, and I think, I'm not sure how the state, um, retirement plan works, but I believe as long as he stays in a government job, he doesn't lose his, uh, retirement. Am I right?
You'd have to ask him. I'm not 100% sure.
So, but what I never got from Brian was anything about the job itself, liking the job itself, performing the job itself, the pride in doing a good job for its own sake, um, doing things right for their own sake. But I definitely got that from Mario, um, that there's, he knows there's a right way to do things, and he does that for the sake of doing things right, even if no one is watching. So, and Mario, like Mike, uh, he does, he likes to stay busy. He's, this is a hard physical job. He's used to working outside. He works outside now. Uh, he's not, he's not a sit around, neither one of them are the type of guy to sit around with their feet up. He's not going to, uh, do like maybe the former guys and create a fire hazard by blocking off the office from the shop so that they can hook up a portable air conditioner and smoke cigarettes. Also, another advantage with Mario over the other candidates is that he does have, uh, if there isn't, like if you work for the DOT and you have, or Manatee County, and you have an equipment problem, there's a department that handles that. Um, they've got a, there'll be a mechanic that that goes to, and maybe a spare piece of equipment that you can drive in. But in Redding to Shore's, there's no department to refer equipment malfunctions to. It's us. So being able to troubleshoot those things in-house is a, is a benefit because otherwise we're at the mercy of vendors for fixing our equipment. And, uh, I did ask, uh, Mike Pafumi, I, if you don't know this, Mike, of course, was a corrections officer before coming to Florida. And I've seen him, he has an uncanny ability, I think, because of that, to assess people out, to assess them. He met, uh, both Brian and he also, of course, he knows Tommy, and then, uh, also Mario. And, um, he got the work ethic vibe as well from, from, uh, and, and I asked him who he preferred in this job, and he did say Mario. And because I have so much respect for Mike and for his work ethic, and he is the guy that has to work with him, um, I put a lot of weight on that. A, uh, side note about the certifications, I don't have any evidence that Brad or Steve were, had the certifications that we're looking for, the tier one and tier two. Um, so, uh...
They did. They had the stormwater stuff. Um, they had to have it per our permit.
Right. That's the thing that, uh, Mike just recently got.
The Florida Stormwater Inspector? Yes, that's one of them.
Correct. Okay. So he got that. So, um...
I don't know if they're two did the same thing because one's named tier one and one's the Florida Stormwater Inspector, but there's different ones.
Right. So what Mike got was like the entry level, the stormwater inspector certification, but that's not the full tier one and the full tier two. Brian has tier one, but, uh, those are more, um, those are longer. Those are more like, uh, the tier one. I was talking to Bob the Builder and he said, those are more like, that's a, that's a day. That's a, that's a full day class. Um, anyway, those certifications. Um, you know, having employees with these certifications is great. And actually, I found out that, um, as far as if we're going to write grants for different things, whether it's parks or whatever, we'll get more money for certain grants if we have more certifications, more of certain types of certifications. So it's important, but it's also something that, um, I took the class schedule for the, uh, storm certification for a tier one and tier two, which is the, um, erosion control and the discharge detection elimination. There's, uh, two courses in July. There's 10 in August, 10 in September, a handful in October, a bunch in November and December. So those are things that, um, that can be fixed. Like, we can get certifications. I can't teach a work ethic to somebody. Let's see, what else? Yeah. So my recommendation, personally, my recommendation would be to hire Mario with the start date as soon as possible. And, uh, with an offer letter stating that maybe within, um, 120 or 180 days that, uh, he complete the NPDES course and possibly also the NIMS course. Um, it's not impossible to do both of those within six months. And I would say we should look at the same thing for, uh, Mike Pafumi as well, to get the full NPDES and the NIMS course. Well, I'm sorry, I should take that back. Uh, Mario already has both of the NIMS courses, the NIMS and the, and the, uh, NICS. And I believe Brian, I made a list here of the certifications. Brian has the ICS, but not the NIMS. Mike has just the, uh, Florida Stormwater Inspector. But, uh, Mario already has the NIMS course. Uh, he just needs the NPDES. And I would say that, uh, we offer him the job that we say that we need to have him get those certifications within six months. That's it.
So what you're saying, what you're saying Jenny, is that you believe that, um, hiring Mario conditionally with him getting the certifications, you would recommend him because of his work ethic, um, and make his employment conditional to obtaining those certificates?
Agreed. But also because, and maybe I didn't mention this, he, um, if Mike Pafumi feels like he's lacking in any area, it's the mechanical. And, um, Mario has more experience in that.
Okay.
I'm thinking that Brian does not have that experience because he's worked for Largo, Manatee, and DOT where if something breaks down, you have somebody whose job it is to fix that. Here, that's not the case. So Mario has more of a mechanical background and, you know, so something like the sprinkler system or whatever it is, if it's a, uh, leaf blower or, uh, one of the trucks or something, the lift, he could figure it out, or between he and Mike, they could figure it out.
So you think he and Mike would be a good combination for fulfilling our need for grounds, maintenance, repair, stuff that goes on with grounds, and then they would also both be trained for the NPDES and the NIMS requirements that they don't have?
Right. And it's not, yeah, the grounds maintenance, these days, since we subcontract the landscape maintenance, the grounds maintenance is really the trash cans, uh, the dog stations, and then the, the beach. That's the, the meat and potatoes of it. And then, of course, there's a million other things that we need to do with the parks that we, where we can make it even better.
It, to me, it seems like of the three candidates, Mario had the least background in grounds and the types of things that our person would do. But if you're saying that that's, those are trainable things and you can commit to having him trained.
Right.
And, and you need to know from my perspective, I fret about NPDES beyond frettable, beyond calculating it. Um, I go to bed at night thinking about us polluting our storm drains. It's really stupid, but it bothers me. So I would want, like, I really want us to attend to that. You know, I, I think that's something we need to look at. I don't understand the sewer system and what is required of the guys for sewer training and sewer work, but is that trainable? I mean, do either of these guys have the competency that we need today in sewer and stormwater?
Well, Mike has the, um, he's got the Stormwater Inspector
Okay.
certification. He already has that.
Okay. I mean, is this sewer and stormwater trainable, or do people have to come to the table with it? There's, that's a really big deal with me.
It's trainable. I mean, Mike started out without that course. He just was taught how to do the stations and, and, uh, you know, taught about this stuff by just doing it. Yeah.
Okay.
He jumped right in.
Um, so you don't feel, from what you know, and you are the person, um, you feel that, I, I'm pretty comfortable with the beach stuff and all the mechanical, you know, like just the mechanics of doing the doing. But what I need, what I really want to make sure that you understand from my perspective is that...
How important that is?
Yeah, to me, it's very important. And that we get it and that we, we attend to it and we have a good crew. I think a good crew above anything else is the most important thing. If you get a good crew, you can go with that. I think we've made a great hire with Mike. So your track record for me is 100%. So I'm leaning towards your track record. I just want assurances that we will be totally covered and you will make, you will draw attention to that, that that will be a focus.
May I comment?
Yeah.
You know, I like, I like the two of you have interviewed and hired, I've probably hired more than you. I've hired thousands of, of, of people. I think your assessment of Brian is wrong. You know, when you question his work ethic, uh, I dug into that very, very deeply. And am convinced that, that he has, uh, the work ethic that we're looking for. I also talked with him about his mechanical ability and repairs and that sort of thing, and I'm comfortable that he has that, that mechanical insight as well. Unlike, unlike Mario, he understands sewer and storm water, and he got trained in that because he had an interest. I'm not interested in hiring someone to see if they're gonna have an interest in that, in that sort of work, or to train them up on our, uh, on, on our time, you know, for that. I would much rather go with someone who has, uh, the, uh, has the experience and has the ability and we can put to work, you know, you know, immediately on those activities, not potentially six months down the road where he's got some, he may have gone to a class, but that doesn't mean that he has any training. You know, in addition to the, to the certificates that, that Brian has, he has the on-the-job training. So he's, he's worked with all of those, uh, systems and worked under the supervision of others in, in other municipalities. You know, we bring somebody in and train them up on that stuff, where's he gonna go to get answers, you know, to the teacher that he took the one-day classroom? I'm not sure that's the, the wisest approach. I like Mario, don't get me wrong. I think he's a, I think he's a nice guy. I think he's got, he, he came across as having a strong, uh, work ethic, work, work ethic, and I think that's important. But I didn't come away from my meeting with Brian feeling that he didn't have that.
And he can fix. I went into that with him. He fixed the sewers before in this town. He can install those valves that we have installed, backflow valves. He can already come to the table with that. Like, he's very proficient in that. So, and I, and I did spend quite a bit of time with him, talking to him about all that stuff and, and the reason why he's left. And, and he also has, he brings something to the table. He brings, he's from here. He knows exactly who to call if there's a problem. If we need help with FDOT things, he called, he works there now. He knows exactly who to call. If we need help from Madera Beach, that's where he came from at one point. You know, he knows who to call in the county. He knows all the right people. He has the contacts of 20-something years, you know, of working, or was it, how many? 30-something years? I don't know. He's, he was very knowledgeable and knew, I mean, all the people that married him even. I mean, it was just amazing to me that somebody came to us, like.
Yeah, because he said he grew up out here on the beaches and that he did have, uh, public works with Madera Beach and...
And he is used to being outside. That's what he does. You know, he showed us a picture of him 420 feet in the air installing something for FDOT on Skyway Bridge. So he's used to being outside all the time. I asked him, I said, "Would you, uh, be okay with doing menial, you know, janitorial tasks?" He said, "Not at all." I mean, I expected, that's what I would be doing, period. I expected I would be cleaning town hall bathrooms or whatever, we've got bathrooms other places and, you know. I said, "Would you have a hard time learning our story?" And he said, "Not at all." I mean, he, he knows, he comes to the table with a lot of knowledge that we probably didn't even advertise for. But, you know, and he's looking for retirement. I mean, he's, he's got a long way to go, but where we are, one of the only towns that have the FRS system that he was really looking for. And that's why he ended up even thinking about applying here. So he came to the table with, with more than we advertised for, which, and I don't, I mean, I did not get, come away from him thinking he had no work ethic, that's for sure. Nobody. I mean, Tommy either. I think all of them. We have very, very, very good choices. I just think we have to do what's best for the towns and the towns' needs right now. I, I mean, he may be able to pass, like you said, a test, which is great, but can you really install that backflow valve that we need done, you know, on Monday? Can you do that, or do we have to hire somebody, or do we have somebody that can do it right now? He did it all over Madera.
The, the FRS is what? Board Retirement System? Okay. He was looking to that?
Mm-hmm. We have a board of retirement.
Yes.
Yeah. So, you know, I mean, he, he, he really did not sound like he wanted to go anywhere. He said it took him 15 minutes to get here. He's used to an hour and a half drive, you know, so this was nothing at all. So, I don't know. I think that's just my feeling. I, I, I felt really good about him. I really did. But that was me. But I spent a lot of time with him.
I, I like Mario, don't get me wrong. I think he's got, I think he had a really strong work ethic, but I don't know that we're getting anything beyond, uh, a laborer in that, in that hire. That's, that's my concern.
Well, what we advertised was exactly what Mario brings to the table. What I'm saying is what we advertise for. And I don't even know that we really understood our needs at the time that we advertised, that we really needed a lot of certifications. We may have had a bigger, you know, pool of people. I don't know. But I think it became very, very apparent. And he knows how to go to a job site and see if there's still fences installed properly today. He knows they have to have the gravel at the job site. He knows all of those things. He knows codes. I mean, he could drive around and, you know, do all that on our job sites. So, and he, he wouldn't have to be trained. Comes with that. That's, that's the benefit for me.
So now what?
Well, we don't have a motion of anything. So we, you just talked, and I've talked, and you've talked, and Cindy's talked, so...
So is this more of a workshop, or are we making?
No, we're making a motion for something. This is what this special meeting is about. Somebody would like to make a motion, please?
Who? I make a motion that we offer the job to, um, Mario, oh my God.
Mario!
Orlando. How could I forget that? I make a motion that we offer the position to Mario Orlando, uh, conditional on him completing the NPDES training, tier one at least, within, uh, six months of hire. Then if there's no second, then what?
Then somebody else can make a motion.
Okay.
Then I would make a motion that we hire, uh, Brian Spees.
We, I think, yes, so, how does that, does that motion?
No, the motion dies for lack of second.
So we have a motion.
So what's the motion to hire Brian Spees?
Yes.
Okay. He has tier one. Do we need to make a, uh, condition for him to get tier two? NPDES within six months?
He has down here, um, one, two, three, four different certificates regarding stormwater management. So that might be part of the tier two stuff. I'm not sure.
It's not as far as I can tell.
And I think he does have the...
He has tier one for sure. And he has some of the other, uh, initial stormwater courses.
Mm-hmm.
It's a little half-day courses or whatever online, but, uh, he doesn't necessarily have tier two that I can see.
Yeah, I, I said I don't know what that means.
Everything he said, I don't see tier two.
I wouldn't make it as part of the motion. I think we've got an obligation to look at, uh, and review the training that all of our employees have and what's available. And we've probably not done as good a job of that as we, as we should. That, that includes, uh, the town clerk on, on down. You know, we get too busy to, to participate and train that probably would be a benefit.
Okay.
Jenny, with regard to...
We have, wait, we have a motion, so we have a motion.
I can't ask a question.
We have a question. We have a question. Or, I mean, we have a motion. We don't have a second.
Oh, okay.
To hire Brian.
I guess I'll make a second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second.
So can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
How, how do you feel, um, if we would select Brian because of his experience? Is that, do you think he's a, do you, you think he's an acceptable candidate?
If that is the decision of the commission, I'm fine with that.
What, what I...
I'll adapt myself to it. I'm, I'm totally fine with it, and I know Mike Pafumi is as well.
Okay.
I mean,
Okay.
we're here for the, I mean, I'm here for the town. I'm, I'm here for me.
I, I think we all...
Yeah.
...
Sitting up here. Yeah. I'm here for the town. Mike's here for the town.
Okay.
You know, it's, it's not about us. It's not about what's better for us or having a personal...
Right.
Dog in the hunt. This is actually how I feel.
Right.
And this is actually based on my experience.
Right, right. Okay. Okay.
Any other discussion? Will you please go see if we have any attendees that would care to speak on this? I can't see that on my screen.
So, uh, uh...
I do one more question.
I do one more question. Um, I believe I heard...
Yes, hello. We have four attendees. And would any of the attendees care to comment to the commission on this subject? Please raise your hand. I see no hands raised.
Okay, send them.
Oh, wait, all right. I think I lost my thought.
Oh, no. Come on. You can get it back.
I am sorry.
No, so I was gonna...
I have it back. I have it back. Let's get him out. Let's get him out here. Um, so I believe I heard that this marking, this sunshine marking, um, we, we call a number, and then Brad and Steve went out and marked. And then I believe we had information that we were gonna be charged for that now. Is that the phone call of them locating it, or is it because we couldn't mark it with Brad and Steve going?
Both. We could be trading and marking.
Yeah.
So if we, if Ken...
I don't know that Brian has that either.
Can Brian mark?
But we could find one of these towns that does it around.
I think he did say he could.
He did talk about it. I don't remember.
Because if that would save us 60, if, if, if he could mark, okay, not locate, because only sun, the sunshine, will they charge us for locating?
We have to locate and mark.
Wait a minute. What did they do for us then? Wait a minute, what did they do for us then?
Okay, our guys always located and marked our sewer utility.
They give us.
Anybody that is going to dig has to call the Sunshine, it's called before you dig, and each utility has to locate their utility and mark it.
Okay, so is, so are they going.
So for us, it's just the sewer?
No, no, no.
Yeah.
It's, they have to locate it, so they locate it.
Oh.
They tell us the, the location of it, and then our guys go out and physically.
No, no, you're misunderstanding.
Okay.
Our guys have to locate our own sewer utility.
Okay.
And mark that sewer utility.
Okay.
For the contractor.
Okay.
We, right now, no one has that experience, so we have been utilizing a company, and I asked them for an annual quote, which came in at $49,000.
Okay.
So with that, I spoke to Mike Perfumi, and he was going to be getting together with Don from next door.
Okay.
Who was going to help him learn how to locate and mark our utility.
Okay.
But I do believe when the interview was going on with Brian, he had had that experience.
With Brian. I think he said, well, he would just have to learn our town, wasn't that what?
Something like that, yeah.
He would just have to learn our town, but.
So, and, and here, it affects us and the town, just related to the sewer, for the power line, that's not us.
No, just the sewer, that's only our utilities.
So basically, Brian would come to the table with that?
I can't, I think he talked about it, he said he would have to learn our town.
Which means, which means the same thing as.
I mean, let's just assume that he needs to learn it just like Mike does.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It would be the same outcome.
So it's a matter, it's a matter of not signing an annual contract with these.
Yeah.
Guys, it's a matter of stop, get measure, until our people are up to board, got it. Okay, that's, that was my question with that, because I don't want to have to hire another employee and then add $49,000 to the cost of that town.
I think it would be, I mean, we, we've got the mass, it would be trainable pretty quickly.
Yeah, and Mike might have had a little training with Don already, they were supposed to meet last Monday, but with the fish kill, who knows?
Yeah, I doubt it. Both of them have been very difficult.
Okay, okay, I'm good, I'm done.
So, wait, I, I just want to ask about, you know, is it, do we say how much money we're making this job offer, $20 an hour, or whatever?
We've never done that in the past, we, like, when we hired Mike, that wasn't part of the discussion.
Normally we do, why we didn't with Mike, I'm not sure, but.
That wasn't even brought up.
I, I know, but I'm, I'm in the past, we, that's what's normally it said.
Do we have a range?
We started Mike out at.
He's in the range, I know that.
Twenty. We started Mike out at 20.
This guy is in the range, I know that.
Okay.
What range?
The, the pay range that we were paying for this job. He's not making too much money, he's not making too little.
Okay.
All right.
So. So help me out with, with our hiring, in our, in our personnel practices. When we hire a new employee, do we, do we review them after a certain period of, of time for performance?
Six months.
Okay.
And actually, your, motion should.
At first.
Yeah.
Pardon me?
Mike was the, like, at first.
Right, Bill Queen sent us him.
But then, when we made him, the decision to make him permanent, that was discussed and voted on here.
So.
So I would think, I would, I would think that maybe, you know, some starting pay is, is, is good with some review after six months, and for, you know, appropriate behavior, I don't, I'm just thinking out loud here.
Whatever the policy is.
Yeah, that's what I was asking for.
Yeah, there is a policy, there's a policy. I think probationary period is a year now, isn't it? And a review at six months.
It could be a year, but you get every three months.
So there's a six-month review, and then an annual review, and at the annual review is when the probationary period ends. Or is it three months, Mary Beth?
I want to say it was three months.
Every three months is a review.
Okay.
So if you're going to amend your motion to include the amount of pay, I would amend the motion to hire conditionally, because we have to have the, the background check done, we have to have the drug and alcohol tests done, so it could be whoever you hire, put that in there, and then we send them a letter, a conditional letter, and they take care of doing that.
So the review is after six months?
Well, and our, our says every three months, and, and after a year, you're done with probation.
So what happened, what, what's the six-month thing?
That, that was.
Well, that was just something I was, you know, questioning, I was, you know, I was wondering whether we hire somebody on, and then, you know, review their performance.
You thought it was a six-month review?
Yeah, I was, I wasn't sure.
Okay.
Okay, I just don't know, I, I was just, I was just, I was just, I would, I was just, you know, considering this in terms of compensation, do we compensate at one level and then review after six months as opposed to a whole year?
Okay, so.
You know, for additional compensation, and I don't know, I mean, that's, that's, I'm just thinking out loud.
Okay, so the first review would be at 90 days, and then every 90 days after that?
For the first year?
Yes, so three.
Three, six, nine, twelve.
And then after annual, okay.
Yeah, I don't know what his compensation is now, and.
I always started mine at 20, that seems fair.
Yeah.
So now, do we need to, does Mike need to amend the motion with the pay thing, or what?
I think the motion should be amended with the pay and the, the words conditional upon, you know, the background check and the blood and.
So, so I'll, I'll amend my motion to include that this is a contingency offer based upon successfully completing background, drug test, and any other personnel issues we have, and that we hire him for a starting pay of $20 per hour with a, with a review of compensation after six months, so.
Okay.
Still have a motion?
Yeah, I'm still writing it down.
Okay.
A motion, we have an amended, we had a motion and second, and now an amended motion, and we'll need a second.
A second.
Okay, so now we have an amended motion, an amended second. Any other discussion? All right, Mary, please hold it over.
Commissioner Kraut?
Yes.
Commissioner Blackburn?
No.
Vice Mayor Robinson?
Yes.
Mayor Henderson?
Yes.
All right, all right, this meeting is adjourned.